It is four thirty and we'd like to welcome everyone and call the order of the study session of the West Valley City Council. It is January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. And we are in the multi-purpose room of West Valley City Hall. We have all members of the council present. Councilman Norfeld, Councilman Hune, Councilman Wedstone, Councilman Harmon, Councilman Christensen and myself. We're also joined at the tables with our city manager, Mr. Peely and our city recorder, Ms. Kamek. We have our minutes from January fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Turn those to the council for discussion or emotion.
Who approved the minutes?
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. I'm all in favor standing.
Aye.
And those stand approved. We will now go to the introduction of our new employees. And we'll first begin with Mr. Peely, introduce his two new employees.
Oh, yeah. Harold and Lauren, you want to come up to the? They can have them introduce themselves or, uh, but don't come, come up out here.
I'd love to stand up here.
Yeah, just happy to introduce Harold and Lauren. Our two management analysts that we recently hired earlier on this month. Sorry, I just put a mint in. I'm trying to chew it and shut up, suck on it, but. Really excited to have them, Harold. Born and raised, well, raised in, in West Valley. And was recently the Hunter football coach, Hunter. Wanted to hire him mostly so we don't have to face him next year. But Harold has a, is a. Of our finance, top finance and literacy is an MBA and very qualified and really doing a great job for us now. Lauren comes from BYU MBA program. She was recently with the city of Pleasant Grove as a management intern and very, very sharp and. Came with high, high recommendation and. And so we're just happy to, happy to have them. They're already, they've been. Really moving, moving us forward just within the last couple of weeks with all the projects they're working on, but. Does Harold and Lauren, anything you guys want to say?
Sorry about how from West Valley. Push me football.
She is now.
Hey, thank you. Next we'll have Mr. Bunderson, introduce his employee.
Thank you. Caitlin, come on up. Very happy to have Caitlin Scott back. She was our employee from twenty one to twenty three. She is a great personality. She's, she's fun to be in the office and. She does the very, very difficult work of being a victim advocate and she does it very well. So we're very happy to have her back. One fun, interesting thing about Caitlin is that she lived in Japan before she worked for us the first time and taught English.
Yeah.
For a couple of years. So very happy to have her.
Thank you. Okay, we'll turn the time to Ms. Jamie Young.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. It's a privilege to introduce you to Haley Finn. Haley also is a native of West Valley City and Hunter High graduate. As she has worked as a lifeguard part-time for us since two thousand seventeen. And while she was working for us, she was pursuing a degree from the University of Utah in kinesiology and nutrition. So we had a position available and it was a really good fit and we obviously knew her really well and her work ethic and her. Her ability to face challenges and, and things head on and really dive in and get going. So we're really excited to have Haley. Do you want to say anything about your, yourself? I know it's kind, it's a little intimidating for these folks. So yeah, we're excited to have Haley on our team.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll now have Mr. Colbert.
Good afternoon. I'm Steve Calvert. I'm the administrator over the courts. I would like to introduce two of our newest employees, Isaiah and Jessica. You know, Isaiah's been, you know, was born and raised here in Salt Lake City. He is attending, doing psychology studies at the Salt Lake Community College. And he loves to paint and skateboard. And so is a great addition to our team. He's learning fast and doing a great job. Jessica is very outgoing. She loves to make a, you know, love that, to make that lasting impression upon our clients, you know, and she knows that it's a very difficult situation that they're coming into the courts for. And she tries to make them that ease and does a great job of doing that. And she knows, so she's been a great asset to our team as well.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll now turn the time over to Chief Evans.
Thanks. We're, we're missing one. Dan Pickett, he's stuck in traffic, I think, right now. If he gets here, we'll, we'll introduce him. First off, this is Ian Nadel. He was a lateral hire, came from South Davis Fire District. Marcus Duarte is a retired captain from Washington. He is a new fire prevention person. He retired from the fire service. With a number of years and he works in our fire prevention division. So we're happy to have both of them. It's a good addition. This was one of the first times we've hired lateral hires in the fire department. So. It'll be good to have him.
Nice.
Good.
They wanted to speak, I'm sure. Well, we welcome all of you and thank you for. Stepping up and taking the jobs with West Valley and I'm sure you're going to be a great contribution to our city. So thank you so much. All right, we will now go to our regular meeting. Do we have anything? On the regular meeting we need to review or? We're all good for tonight?
Yep, unless you guys have any questions. Are there any questions from the council for tonight?
Can you just walk us through the process?
So the voting process or just how the whole night could look?
Yeah, just the whole night.
Okay, so what we've done is we've asked, we have fifteen candidates, originally had sixteen, we did have one withdraw yesterday. Um, we'll ask them to wait in the lobby. While we conduct the interviews and then we'll have a member of staff, Sam Johnson, he'll. Grab each candidate by name as it's their turn. After they've interviewed, they'll be able to just remain in the council chambers. We've set the format, so it's up to three-minute introduction and then two questions, the same two questions, they'll have up to one minute to answer those. After all the interviews have finished, what we'll do is we'll pass out a ballot to each member of the council. You'll select. Your number one, your number one candidate. I'll collect those ballots, go to the back table and I will tally the votes with our finance director to witness and. Make sure that we're doing that all correctly. And then I will come and just announce which candidate received how many votes. Depending on the outcome, if, if one candidate has four votes or more, which is a majority. The process is complete and we'll wear them in and go from there. If, if there's any other scenario, we'll, we'll be ready for that. There's a few different ways that we do that involving some coin tossing possibly, so.
Yeah.
Before the vote, after the interviews, any discussion or we just go right to the votes?
You're welcome to do any discussion. Yep, if there's any discussion that the council would like before we pass out the ballots.
And so this process is totally different than our last process, but it's because the legislature has set new rules.
Yes.
So that's why it's kind of foreign to everybody.
Yeah, they're pretty specific in the, the coin tossing part of things, so.
Yeah, no nominations like last time or anything like that, so. Any other questions then for Nicole? Okay, seeing none, we'll move down to. Our public hearings, we have application SB one twenty twenty four. And we'll ask Mr. Lehman to come up and present that one for us.
Mr. Lehman actually is six, so Steve is going to jump in and do that for him.
Just ask for Steve and either way you'll get it right. All right, so this is a request from a number of property owners. You can see here on the slide to, and requesting to vacate Clifford Street, Clifford Street. Which is fifty-six fifty west and just north of twenty-three hundred south. I'll show, so it's this area here, it's outlined in red. You may know this area, it's been referred to as the salvage yard area, although it is, has been transitioning over several years. Just by way of background, so over twenty years ago, the city did a special improvement district or SID to improve. Twenty-three hundred south and fifty-seven hundred south. So those roads were improved with curb gutter. Utilities, but fifty-six fifty or Clifford Street was not. Here's just a close-up of that, of the street that's being requested for vacation. Just some pictures here. And so this is looking west along twenty-three hundred south. And so the, the property on the, the right side of the image here is the looking, the properties there. On the north side of, of twenty-three hundred. And then this is looking, you can see the, where the stop sign and that's where Clifford Street begins. So this is looking more towards the northeast along twenty-three hundred south. And this is looking more towards the north along twenty-three, or excuse me, Clifford Street. So you can see where the pavement just ends and it turns to gravel there. And it's, it's, it is rough. Here's a plat map, so you can see property ownership. So again, the blue areas there to be vacated. You have properties on the east side that have access on fifty-six hundred west or twenty-three hundred south. As well as along Clifford Street. You can see the owners there on the west side. And so in this scenario, what will happen is there will be, because there are some utilities in that space, there will be an easement remained for the utilities. And then there will still be cross-access allowed along that space. So that folks can still use it as an access, but it's, it will no longer be a public right-of-way. And in talking to Public Works, given that we went through the process of doing a, a special improvement district and didn't improve that, there's really no plans to ever improve that space. And so now. As this area transitions, they can actually clean that space, improve it and have more flexibility in how it gets used as, as long as it still maintains as an access. So main difference being that. With a private access, it doesn't need to be as wide. You don't have to have the landscaping you typically have along a public street. So this. Would serve more like a, kind of an internal driveway between, between owners. And this just shows a little bit about where you have the existing businesses there on the east side of. Clifford Street. And you can see just the, the different owners here that are, that are involved. So this just shows how now you can again have parking go right up against that, that driveway, whereas before you wouldn't be able to put parking right up on the street like that. Whereas here you have that flexibility to, to do that type of design. That summarizes the request. Any, any questions?
Any questions from the council?
So this was really recorded eighteen eighty-nine.
This is a very old, this is one of those on your piece of the west from back in the eighteen hundreds, yeah.
This incorrectly recorded land. I know it's not part of this, but.
So, and I'm, apologies, I know Steve Lehman knows a little bit more of the ins and outs on this, but. There were some, when twenty-three hundred was improved, I think there were some survey areas out in that area. And so I, I believe those have been cleaned up at this point, but between now and next week, I can have maybe Steve clarify that, the detail there.
Utilities are left going down Clifford Street. What utilities?
I believe there's water and sewer along, on Clifford, yeah. So again, yeah, there, there would be an easement in place for those utilities.
And then they'll gain access from Lester or fifty-sixth?
So yeah, depending on the property, so those that are right on. Six, so the, the, this larger building here has access, excuse me, access on fifty-six as well as Clifford, which would be just a private access. This facility here has, right now, there's actually a driveway on twenty-three hundred, but with this reconfiguration could have just the access off of what, you know, what is now Clifford. This property here would be through the, through the easement. This property on the corner actually has access right on twenty-three hundred. And then it's the same owner here, so they can access fifty-seven hundred or the vacated Clifford. So. Depending on the situation, there's more than one option.
And they're doing this as a group, so nobody's going to be landlocked and surprised?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, seeing no other questions? Thank you. All right, we'll now turn the time over to Mr. Thomas. For resolution twenty-five dash twelve.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Craig Thomas, Division, or sorry, I don't have Division anymore. Community Engagement and Culture Department. The item before you tonight is a grant with the Utah Division of Arts and Museums. It is a grant that was written back in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three timeframe. It is a two-year grant. They issue it in two installments. We are currently in about six months, seven months. Seventh month of the second installment. Utah kind of lags a little bit in getting the money out to the organizations. The original grant amount was for one hundred and thirty-five in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, or twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, the grant amount was sixty-three thousand. This year, the grant amount is sixty-seven four-ten. The grant is for general operations support, the cultural center.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Thomas? Okay, thank you so much. All right, we have resolution twenty-five dash thirteen. We'll time, turn the time over to Mr. Johnson for a federal aid agreement.
Good afternoon, Dan Johnson, Public Works Director. This is a federal aid agreement between the city and the state of Utah Department of Transportation. We've been working with them, they have through the, what was called the bipartisan infrastructure law. They've got a lot of bridge replacement money and. That's, that's federally funded. And so this obligates the city to, to pay our, our matching share of the, of the funds, which would be roughly seven hundred thousand dollars. To the, with a total project value of over ten million for the three bridges. And so the three bridges. They're all on the Utah and Salt Lake Canal. One is at six thousand west, one is fifty-four hundred west and one is at Dartmouth Avenue. Dartmouth Drive, it's where, yeah, anyways. Where West Point and Dartmouth kind of become one, but, but. We're really grateful for this opportunity to replace these bridges. You, you may recall, we've replaced several other bridges along the Utah and Salt Lake Canal, kind of one at a time. And they're bridges that were constructed in the seventies and are in pretty rough shape and are grateful that they're, they're being replaced. So if there's any questions, I'll answer them or.
Okay, any questions? Can you remind us about what south the canal is?
Yeah, so the canal crosses fortieth west at about forty-seven hundred south. And so the first bridge is, is Dartmouth. And so it's just, it's just north of forty-seventh south at about forty-four hundred west roughly. And it's in a neighborhood and you may recall, it's actually got some kind of strange geometry. The roadway comes up in, in a bit of a hump. And we're, this gives us an opportunity to fix that roadway, so we'll, we'll be able to go back. Couple lots on either side and, and improve the, the vertical site distance over that bridge.
I think that's where I used to have to speed up to do the school speed limit. Cause it was twenty-one on the side and twenty-five on the other.
Yeah, it's definitely, if you look at it, you'll, you'll, you realize that something ought to be done there. The next bridge is at fifty-four hundred west and that is just south of forty-one hundred south. And then the, the last one is six thousand west, which is just north of forty-one hundred south, right by the park. Westview Park.
Didn't see any questions before. I'm not seeing any now, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now turn the time over to Ms. Young, resolution twenty-five dash fourteen. And she'll just stay up there and do twenty-five dash fifteen.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Jamie Young, Parks and Recreation Director. So the first is a, to extend an interlocal agreement with Salt Lake County Aging Services. They. Give us about eighteen thousand dollars a year to provide the meals and. Some of the support that goes along with the, the meal, the lunch program at the Harmon Senior Recreation Center. And then they also provide the transportation for, for seniors who are unable to drive to access the facility. So. This is just an extension of an existing grant that will get us through the end of twenty twenty-five.
Okay, any questions? All right, let's go to fifteen.
Okay, this is a, a, a project that was approved as a program mod to modernize the elevator at the Harmon Senior Recreation Center. The elevator was original. It was put in in about the late nineteen eighties. And so it's really difficult to get parts for, to make repairs on that. And of course, being a senior center, it's a critical element of. Of the service that they provide there for people to access the, the three levels of that great facility. We put the, the project out to bid and got three bids back and Schindler Elevator was, was the lowest responsible bidder. We do have a lot of experience with them. They maintain and, and modernize both elevators at City Hall in the last few years. And so. We're confident in, in their ability to complete this, this project. So we're seeking approval for. The agreement to move forward with the modernization at the senior center.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the council? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now turn the time over to Mr. Erickson for resolution twenty-five dash sixteen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jason Erickson with Parks and Recreation. So yeah, so this, as you know, we have parks, well, as you may or may not know, we have parks that are approaching forty years old. Back in the early two thousands, the Division of Drinking Water changed the code on which backflow prevention devices are, are approved for use in landscapes. And so. We have a number of what's called double-check valves, which were installed on our older, on our older systems. And so because of that, we need to. Begin switching those out. I know this, this was approved as a program modification, but we went out to bid. We received three bids back. As you can see, we've decided to go with Utah Professional Lawn Care. At one twenty-one, well, one twenty-one five, the, the issue is for one twenty-five because we, you never know, sometimes things arise and. It's good to have a little extra cash to be able to. To finish the job. So, but anyway, but, but yes, so that's it.
And was there a deadline of when these all had to be replaced through this? I mean, businesses and everybody?
No, so, so I, at least with us. Now, I haven't asked about other businesses, but they, as long as, as long as we're working through them. Then Granger Hunter is, is okay to work with us with that. So we have, we, we started out with about thirty-four of them. We did thirty, or we did three of them ourselves last year. And this, this is for ten. And so, so it's kind of. Phase one of three.
Any questions from the council? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have our consent agenda. We have franchise agreements and other usual. Right-of-way purchase agreements, deeds and easements. Does the council have any questions on any of these? Does Brandon just want to come? Does anybody have questions on number one is the very first one on A. That's the one that if Brandon can come up if anybody has questions? Nobody has questions? Awesome. Okay, thank you. All right. Our regular meeting on July eleventh. Does anyone have any objections to adding the five resolutions to the consent agenda for the regular meeting? February. February eleventh. July is warmer. Can I go to July when it's warmer? As I walked in today, some gentleman, these two guys were talking, they're like, this is like summer out here. Turned around and said, no. I can tell you when it'll be summer. Oh, sorry, I'm trying to go to warm. So February eleventh, does anybody have an objection? Okay, we'll move the consent or the. Resolutions to the consent agenda. Okay, we'll move on to our communications and turn the time over to Mr. Hill for our legislative update.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Brandon Hill at the Legal Department. Before we get into this scintillating topic. Just a friendly reminder that we do have some disclosures that are due by the end of the month. So. Those of you who have completed those, thank you, Councilman Hune. But no, if you haven't completed those, I, I have yours as well and yours. And if I didn't name you, I still love you, but I really need your disclosure. And I'll help if you have any questions before the meeting, I, we can sit down and talk about that too. So I'm here to help with that. All right, so your boss has asked that we talk just briefly about the legislature generally and kind of what our process looks like and how we're going to manage the session. And, and what is going on so far. So the first item is by far the most important, which is don't be shy. Tell me what you care about. If there are issues that are before the legislature or that could potentially be that you're passionate about and that you're not seeing on the tracker or that you're not hearing discussed. Or that you just want to know that we're on top of and looking at it and engaging, let me know what those are. It's the council that drives what those priorities are. I have lots and lots of ideas and only a couple of them are good. So. I want to hear from you about that. Every week, we participate with the league in their Legislative Policy Committee that sets the policy for the league. They generally do a fantastic job. Those. Those are long meetings sometimes, but they're, they're often very helpful and it's really good to hear the thoughts of our colleagues from other cities and. I think very, almost all the time, we're in pretty close consensus with where they are. We also participate with Chamber West, which is great to hear from our business community, from a few of the other. Cities here on the west side, but to hear those perspectives as well. And that's a great avenue to reach out to our legislators. This time of year, pretty much daily, I'm chatting with our legislators, with folks from the league, with everybody who might have something to do with the matters that are important to us. And if you have an issue that's important, if you want to chat and reach out with your legislators, let me know. I'll make those connections for you. We're always looking for funding opportunities, which we're going to talk about here in a couple of slides. What that looks like in the context of this year. This last item is kind of the default, right? And so unless the council feels differently, this is kind of the default idea that I have about where our city is, right? We support local control. We want our role to be respected and we need everyone to acknowledge the limitations that we have. So. We're a city. We cannot solve all of society's problems. There are some things that we're really good at doing and there are some things we have absolutely no control over. And I think sometimes the legislature is great about understanding that, sometimes not so much. And so. And so that's the consistent message that's there. Um, and I think that's the most important idea is respect our role. We do what we do, and I think we do a pretty good job of it. Um, let us do that and um, we can collaborate together. So bill tracking, uh, we have, we track all the bills uh that have any potential to impact city operations and then identify the priorities that are things that might have a bigger impact. And so what that looks like in practice is around a third of the bills that come out might have something that impacts us in some way, usually very minor. Um, often it's something that the chief is going to have to talk to her officers about. And so this year, for instance, we have literally forty new criminal offenses that are being created. And the overwhelming majority of that activity was already against the law. So for example, we have now the crime of assaulting a referee. And so you can just cross out of a referee and you still have a crime. But that's the kind of thing that um, that's one of those things that we just have to be aware of and we kind of check a box and it's done. Sometimes it's more important than that. And then there are some bills that are a really, really big deal that we identify as priorities. So the bills on the tracking sheet are grouped by priority and by department. So you'll see there's an all bills tab, there's a tracking, there's a priority, and then all the individual departments and areas of interest. These bills do move pretty quickly, especially the last couple of weeks. So you're going to start to see those bills really move fast and furious kind of after Valentine's Day. Everybody starts to feel the love and then the bills start to pass. Um, if if a bill is really important to you and you're not seeing it tracked, don't assume it's because I've already looked at it and I know that it's not a big deal. Ask the question, say, what's up with this special district bill? What's going on with this power? And I'm happy to answer those questions. And if I miss something, I would sure love to hear it from you guys rather than looking after the session and saying, oh, shoot, I messed up. Um, so has everybody gotten the bill tracker, the first couple additions? Um, it's a big old sheet and we're going to work on making it beautiful. But um, for this year, right now, it's it's mostly getting the content right and then I'll learn how to code or something. Um, initial theme, so this is what we're seeing the first couple of weeks of the session, and it's what we're going to continue to see. So the biggest single issue is housing and issues that revolve around housing, development density, development standards, land use things, water policy, all of those things. Um, the news on that front is mostly not great. Um, what we're seeing is an increased emphasis on statewide and regional housing planning. And what's really interesting about that, and we'll talk about this in a second, is that we see kind of regional planning for things sometimes where like transportation, for instance. If you look at I fifteen, it does not respect city boundaries, right? It goes through many, many cities, many, many counties, and you're just going to have to deal with that on a regional basis. There's no real alternative to that. In Utah, we have not seen as much regional statewide planning on issues that tend to be more local. And housing and land use is sort of the core local thing, right? That's our neighborhoods. And so we're seeing an emphasis on that that really points toward more preemption. And I don't believe that's a good trend, but I think that's something we're going to see. And what this is creating is a movement kind of toward this Oregon-California land use model, where you see more statewide planning standards, more state preemption. And it's really interesting because in those states, it tends to come from folks that are sort of a caricature of those states, right? It's like a Portlandia thing, you know, you see like granola eating hippie liberals that are going to make sure that you have nothing but electric cars. Here, it's the development community pushing for that. Springmeyer, calm down. We all know, we all, he hired you. It's an affirmative action. So so what what we're seeing here is that the development community is pushing for a very similar kind of model of how to do business as people who politically don't tend to see eye to eye, right? And so the and the common theme is in both of those places that is just the most efficient way to mobilize their influence. And so um, what you're seeing are some things that could be potentially good. You're seeing some optional tools that maybe make sense in certain areas, transit-oriented development, things like that. And then you're seeing some of the preemption things that I think are bad policy that I don't think are going to work well. Um, if you'll note, housing in Oregon and California is not exactly the definition of affordable, right? And so that model isn't necessarily working, but it is being exported. Um, on the budget front, what you're seeing is um, a somewhat more familiar theme, which is a combination of revenues that didn't aren't quite coming in at projections and a desire to cut taxes. And the tax cut discussion is sort of on two fronts. Um, there's the issue of social security income being taxed, which the governor's been very strong about that. And then there's the issue of whether we want to do a broad-based income tax cut or not. And so when revenues are low and you still want to cut taxes, that creates some fairly predictable budget constraints, uh, particularly on the topics we're about to talk. There are a wide variety of bills concerning criminal justice and policing. Most of them are tweaks around the margins and smaller things, but there are some other things that are sort of part of the more national political discourse that have some unexpected impacts on our local police departments. For instance, there's legislation proposed that would require the impounding of vehicles for drivers that don't have a proper license, right? And you would look at that and think, hey, that's a great idea. The problem is about a third of the people we pull over have some kind of problem with their driver's license. And so the reality is, on the one hand, this is probably, you know, it seems like a good idea, get this unlicensed driver off the streets. On the other hand, the chief's people cannot impound two hundred cars a day. And so there's got to be some middle ground there and we'll we'll get there. Um, we'll figure something out. The last item, you have a general dissatisfaction with the homeless service system. And the state is kind of across the board, feeling like they're not, they're spending too much money in that space. How those ideas go together depends on the legislator you talk to, it depends on the committee you're in. But there's a broad-based feeling like about that, that the state is spending too much money in this space and we're not happy with what it is that we're getting. Um, how that they they do, Councilman, they do.
Well, don't the cities pay more than half of the cost?
We do. Uh, we do do that. Um, and and I I think it's really interesting and it's something that that very, a lot of people don't remember, but um, the mitigation funding for public safety costs and and um, city costs around homeless shelters is overwhelmingly contributed by local governments. We were kind of voluntold that a portion of our um, sales tax revenue would be deposited for that purpose. Um, so for a long time, and West Valley continues to pay into that fund. And in the last couple of years, we have received some money from that fund, but the theme is consistent. It's not sufficient to meet the costs. And as Councilman Christiansen said, you know, that there's a state policy component that's sort of driven us to where we are. And I think to be totally honest with you, there's a lot of uncertainty about what to do next. Um, there are some true believers in a central campus model. There are some people who just wish the issue would go away. Um, and then there are some other folks who wish that someone else would come in and take care of it. I think the reality is that's not going to happen. And so uh, we're going to see how that all plays out. I think what you're likely to see for this session is less support for um, the homeless services and an increased burden on the service providers to provide data to kind of justify why it's working. We'll see how that goes. Um, any questions I can answer about how things generally are going? So um, in in the big picture, um, I I think things are going going well for us. We have a couple of funding opportunities that um, that look pretty good, uh, that are in a good place right now. Um, any questions, anything I can answer, any way I can make fun of John further?
Yes, sir. Uh, recently, our former colleague was on the news talking about a bill to put cameras on red light runners. Has that been introduced yet, do you know, or is it?
So as of a few hours ago, it had still not been released. It's possible that it's that's come out in the last um, two, three hours or so. Um, I'll be checking. Um, but it was funny, Jake Jake ran into me and and said, it's, you know, it's my bill that's not even numbered yet that everybody's mad at me about. And so um, and so if you're mad at Jake, you got his number. Uh, and he's uh, but uh, it's been really wonderful to have Jacob at the Capitol. He's been a great voice and good advocate for West Valley. Yes, sir.
I've had several emails in the last over a while about uh, HP one forty eight.
The billboards?
Billboards.
Oh, okay, so that, yeah, so um, House Bill one ninety eight is a really fun bill. Um, so it is a bill that would substantially curtail. Uh, basically, it would allow billboard owners who are displaced to relocate their billboards nearly anywhere they want along the same highway. So as drafted, what would happen is if you have a billboard on I fifteen that gets displaced due to construction. And the specific impetus here is the reconstruction of I fifteen between about North Salt Lake and like six south. So they're a big project there. So the 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 bill is drafted would allow a billboard owner to relocate that billboard anywhere from Tremonton to St. George on the highway. That's not where we want to be. Um, and so there are kind of a couple of of related issues. So you've probably gotten the emails from Scenic Utah and they're not happy. Um, they're mad about billboards generally, which is a fair concern. And I I think it's why most municipalities have restricted billboards for a large extent. There's also the reality of the preemption of the ability to determine where these go. The billboard industry has very substantial protections as it is. They can essentially locate it anywhere within a mile of where it was. And so and and that's of right by statute, we can't say no to that as it is. And so um, I think a cynic would say, if you can't find a place within a mile, you're not trying very hard. Um, but that's the bill is drafted, it's going to change. Uh, as as always, it's likely to be contentious and um, that's a bill will probably be working pretty hard uh from now till midnight. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, um, our governor, he says, uh, we're going to have about thirty eight thousand houses in the future. So how best to going right now, it's a chunked.
Yeah, so there are numerous bills that are intended to support housing construction in one form or fashion. Some of them are kind of optional tools to say, hey, if you do this, we, you know, you can have this tax incentive. You can do the these kinds of things at the margins. Some of them are broader bills. For instance, Representative Ward's bill that gives R one four, maybe R one six, depending on the amendment zoning of right. Um, so anybody could do that. Um, he's reportedly agreed to remove the provision governing all housing being permitted in all commercial zones. But um, but we'll see how all that plays out. Um, whether all of this leads to thirty eight thousand new houses is a really good question, and I don't think anybody knows the answer to that. But the reality is that's an awful lot of houses and given that most of our growth comes from in migration, the reality is that most of those homes are likely to be bought by people who don't live in Utah today. And so how that contributes to the affordable housing situation remains to be seen. But it's um, it's going to be very interesting. And I think there are some very well-meaning folks who are really looking at this issue and trying to address it. And and I think there are also some opportunists and, you know, that's life, I suppose.
Do you remember what the number of us of entitled lots already? Isn't it far more than the thirty five?
So it it depends on how you look at it. Um, so if you i- in terms of lots that are fully entitled and could get a building permit tomorrow, Steve would know better than me. That's in the ten to twenty thousand range. Um, and and then when you take property that is zoned, but maybe not subdivided, it's not clear exactly how many lots that would be. And so you can kind of get to whatever number you want, depending on how you count it. But what is clear is that there are an awful lot of lots that are entitled, that can receive a building permit tomorrow that have not been built on. And in some cases, that's due to infrastructure costs rising and it being difficult financially to do that. In other cases, it's due to kind of project-specific things that don't have much to do with housing policy at all. And so um, in a lot of cases, I think if you simply built the housing that's entitled currently, you'd see a lot of that gap disappear. Uh, whether it would be all of it depends on the beholder, but gets you a good way there. Yes, sir.
Question, homeless. Uh, our state, we're spending a lot of money for homeless, you know, you know that. How's that look like? Is it going to be better in the future or going to be going to be worse?
The state's investments likely to go down. Um, and this is despite the fact that we're looking to open a nine hundred to fourteen bed, hundred-bed shelter. And so getting more beds while spending less money is really, really tough math to make work. Um, I I think that issue is likely to get worse and not better. Uh, the state um, i- in terms of what the League of Cities is saying, I think the League's position that they took is very reasonable and fair. Where we're saying, hey, this, the homeless service situation is changing rapidly. We don't want to mess with the mitigation formula right now. No increases, no decreases, let's keep it the same until we actually have a plan. And and I think that's a really rational and fair position and hopefully it's going to win out in terms of mitigation funding. But in terms of the state investment, that's likely to go down while the bed count goes up.
Which means the city investment goes up? The city responsibility for all cities in the Salt Lake County go up?
I I think that's inevitable. I, the reality is, so um, not not to give anybody a nightmare or anything, but let's suppose you opened up a two thousand-bed homeless shelter right next to City Hall. We could be mad about it, we could be angry, but we're still going to have to police the city. And that's going to be the case no matter where a shelter goes, no matter how big, no matter how small. It's going to have to happen. And what ultimately, ultimately, those costs are going to fall to local government and in the end. And so I think in the long run, what we want to persuade the state is, you know, this is a, this is a statewide issue. We're being told that housing is a statewide issue. Logically, homelessness would also be a statewide issue. Um, and so I'd like to see those go together. If homelessness is a local issue, then I'd sure like to be left alone about housing.
That's why we like Brandon up there. And Molly from the League, or yeah, League did a really good job yesterday testifying on this, so.
Yeah, and 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 a shout out to Molly in particular. She works really hard on this issue and is uh, she's excellent. She's uh, she's one of the most talented folks I've worked with up there, really, really good.
So we do have good people on our side fighting.
We do, and I think it, what I, what I told you guys about a month ago as we led into this is is we're going to try really hard and that doesn't mean we're going to succeed, but it means we're going to give it our level best and make the best arguments. And in the end, we're going to have to serve our citizens no matter what happens, and we're going to be able to do that. All right, thank you.
And Brandon does really work like seven days a week, so if you have a question on the bill tracker. Yeah, that's, he's there this time of year, so. Hey, thank you. Uh, any questions with the council calendar? Seeing none, any potential future agenda items? Hey, seeing none, any council reports?
I did attend the Swatters Pub, Randall to me was great, people there. There should be a glass in each of your boxes from there. Even makes made gave some remarks.
Good job. Yes.
So you to be Friday. Because of the restaurant, but.
Yep, that's where Brian's having dinner tonight because I will not be home to serve him, so. As if I had to cook every night. Um, anything else? I know Will was up at the local local officials day with the League, and that was informative, so. And if anybody wants to come up to LPC on Mondays at noon, more than welcome. We have three votes on that board. Brandon's there usually, myself, and then we could take another person if you'd like to go. And how long did it go yesterday?
It was only an hour and a half. It went right by.
Yeah, that's what it's usually about an hour and a half, but sometimes they go over. So it's not too bad. And if you can't make it in person, you can Zoom as well, so. Okay. Seeing no other reports, did we have a need for a closed session today? Okay, that's all of our business. We just have one more motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we stand adjourned. See you at six thirty in the other room.